We'll start with introductions. Mary, would you like to start introductions?
I'm Mary Yell from Mary.
Got you Malcolm.
Steve Orzak.
Lorraine Morse.
Peter Vero, Superintendent.
Suzanne Bog.
Nick Colston.
Harry Hanson.
Victoria Jenny.
Dick Wells, Superintendent of Student Services.
Josh Lindstrom.
I'm Ruth Hardy getting coffee.
Jen?
Jenny Seater.
Okay. Thanks everyone. And public comments? Does anyone have anything they would like to say? No? Just here visiting? Excellent. Thank you for coming. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th, 2017. Anyone?
So moved.
Second?
Nick.
Gary and Nick, thank you. Are there any corrections or comments about the minutes? I did notice Suzanne that I think Elaine Orozco-Hamons' name was spelled incorrectly if I'm...
Well, I try my best to read the handwriting.
All right, well, let me just double check. When I looked at it, it didn't look right to me. Yeah, it's not O-R-O-Z-A-S. It's O-R-O-Z-C-O.
Orozco. And the other thing I noticed is that the organization that Joanna Colwell was representing is showing up for racial justice.
Yeah.
Or S-U-R-J.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstaining? One abstention, Jen? Great, thank you. Do we have bills tonight to report?
Yes.
Okay.
We only have two weeks. September 25th, this is all funds excluding payroll, $1,908,381.89. And today it's $263,829.67. I will pass this over to you.
And who did the bills here?
The bills today were Steve and Victoria and last week was Victoria and Nick.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the bills as read?
So moved.
Second?
Here.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the bills?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you. And now we have a presentation by the Shoreham School.
Okay, welcome. Welcome Shoreham Elementary School. Glad to have everyone out here. I'd like to first introduce some of our staff who've come out to join us tonight. Tracy Longchamp who teaches 4th and 5th grade. Kristy Dezenbray who teaches 3rd grade. Abby Adams who's our library media specialist. And Angela Foley, our special educator. Tracy's gonna be...
Can I introduce you?
Oh.
And Mike Lennox, our awesome principal here at Shoreham.
I'm gonna do a little bit of sort of a greatest hits here at Shoreham Elementary School. And then I'm gonna hand over the presentation to Tracy who's gonna take one of those hits and go into it in a little more depth. So when we were thinking about what we would like the board to know about our school that might allow you to understand our personality or how we might fit into the ACSD community, these were some of the elements that popped up that we thought we could talk about. Each one of these elements you could talk about for 20 or more minutes. So this is just gonna be an introduction and then I'll hand it over to Tracy who'll go in depth on technology. Something that every elementary school does is you think about how you're gonna shape the kids' thinking of their behavior and start to develop their character and frame it in a positive way. And there's a few things that we do to make that simple and interconnected problem. One of them is we have the three Rs here. We really stress with the kids they need to respect themselves, they need to respect others, and they need to respect the environment. And all of our rules, all of the don't do's are really framed through that. So keep your hands and bodies to yourself so you can respect others when you're walking down the hallway. Or the way you use your indoor voice in the classroom, that's respecting others. Trying your best with your work, that's respecting yourself. Cleaning up when you drop a paper towel, that's respecting the environment. And it allows us to keep it simple, so just three things for the kids to wrap their head on. And it's diverse and can be used in all settings and should carry them forward in their life. The other thing that's really important is that the kids have a sense of belonging and well-being and they feel cared and loved. And we've been trying to use the phrase "I belong" in Shoreham Elementary School and use the image of a bee and use that in plenty ways throughout the school to help just keep reinforcing with the students. We all have the T-shirt that has this logo on the back. Every kid has that T-shirt. They all have water bottles with a bee on it. So we're just trying to keep that around and keep the image that they belong here and that's an important part. The next step for this work here is to take the language of "I be" and kind of intermingle the two. And we've already started doing that and that's gonna happen over time. Something that we do in Shoreham that I think is unique from other schools in ACSD, but it is common in schools throughout Vermont, is something called guided reading. And guided reading is one of the ways and one of the places where we teach ELA, so English Language Arts. And it's a 45-minute block during the day where the kids are in leveled groups, meaning we use Montesimpanel to assess their reading level. And then we make sure that the text they're getting is right at their level to move them along. And it kind of helps us to get out of the paradigm of you're a second grader, so here's what you're doing and get to, look, here's who you are as a person, as a reader, here's your next step. Each week we do a running record, so we keep track of the student's progress. And every six to eight weeks we will reshuffle our groups so the students are always getting the right level of rigor and work. And that's just a picture of our guided reading leveled library. So if you know you're working with a group that's reading at what they'll call Level N, we have a wide array of Level N resources that the teachers can go to and make sure the kids are getting the right piece to move them forward as quickly as possible. So guided reading is something that we've been doing for about a decade. Win is something new that we're trying this year. And I hope the next time you're here I can report back on the success of Win, but it's really just getting out the gate right now. And Win stands for What I Need. And it's a half hour during the day where we take all of the resources we have in the elementary school and focus on one grade level at a time. So we have a reading specialist teacher, we have a special educator, we have a speech and language pathologist. And we've always been supporting students who need those supports, but it's been more where we could fit it and piecemeal it all in. And when you're delivering those supports, you're always, the kid is out of the classroom. The idea is there's a half hour from 8 to 8:30 when 6th grade has all of those teachers available to them. And then we're allowing the classroom teacher to focus on math intervention. So the kids already get an hour and 25 minutes of math. This is another time where the students can get math re-talked to them or if there's a skill that they need to be re-invested, the classroom teacher can provide that. And we're trying to reduce the amount of time the kids are getting pulled out, increase the amount of kids who have access to our resources, being our teachers, our special educator, our re-interventionist, and do it in a way that allows the students to be in the classroom while we're doing our units of inquiry with "I be." And then I thought I'd talk a little bit about how we already are starting to implement different elements of "I be." One of the things with "I be" which is true of kindergarten through 12th grade is the learner profile. You can see it right up over the piano. And it's different attributes that we're always working to develop in ourselves and our students, such as their thinkers, their open-minded. This is a PE class that I walked in and they'd done normal PE things. They came in and they ran and they did some different exercises. They were learning a game. And then it got to a point where this Cara, our PE teacher, put out each one of those posters and the kids had to identify which attribute they thought they had practiced the most during that day. Then she went down and had each kid communicate, talk about how it was. It was a chance for the students to be reflective. So A, they started to connect with the learner profile. More importantly, they had the part of PE where they were doing and thinking, but they also had a part where they stopped and they were reflective about how they were doing and they had to communicate about it. And that's an important part of "I be" is putting reflection and inquiry into the learning cycle. And it was nice to see it happening in settings such as PE and it's happening all throughout. This is "I be" out in the community. Our second graders have been going to different sites in Shoreham and forming questions to see what's out in their community. So this is the upholstery shop and they got to go do a tour down there. And this is something that you may see in an elementary school, but something that Mrs. Bulger's doing very carefully is she's having the kids really form questions before they get there. So this might be the action or the going out and seeing. But they're thinking a lot before they get there and that's the inquiry process that you're gonna be hearing more about, starting to be more deliberate. It's not something that we didn't do before, but it's something that I'm noticing our teachers being more deliberate. And one of the upsides to that is if you just look at the students, they look very engaged, which that's one of the big payoffs we'd like to see. Something we do at the school that I don't think I've talked about much at all is we have a fresh fruit bring. So every kid is provided with fresh fruit every day of the school year for a snack. And it's a diverse group. That's food we got from Champlain Orchard, but the kids also have strawberries and grapes and it gets to expose them to different fruits. And this is something nice I think that we do that's healthy. So now I'm at the part where I'm gonna hand it over to Mrs. Longchamp. And before I do that, I just, we've made some investment in technology here in the past five years. It's really allowed us to take advantage of changes in the way kids can access curriculum and collaborate together. And I know that if I was thinking about technology in an elementary school 10 years ago, I'd be thinking about exposing kids to technology so they learn how to use it, to be teaching computer skills. And we're not thinking about it that way anymore. We're thinking about having the technology enhance what the kids are doing in their classroom. It's not a time of technology. It's a, this is your ELA class and here's how it's being enhanced with our devices. Or this is our science. And instead of having a science book, we've got a subscription to online resources that's always getting updated and it's tied to our standards. But I'm gonna let Mrs. Longchamp show you some of that now. Let me just move my switch to the right side. So this is a page that we've always had in our school for many years. This is based on the old Google Sites and it's what we call our Shoreham Student Portal. So it's got resources on it that we use for years with kids. And the teachers have their pages and teachers use them differently. I'm gonna show you mine. And so mine now switches over to the Google Sites since I just started last year. And so it's a little fancy. So basically it's got links on it for the kids to use to get to the things I need them to get to. So rather than saying, "Open up your Google Chrome this," it's, "Open up your computer, start here, go there." So one of the most common things that we're gonna use is, can you see my mouse there? Is this one called Classroom. And so this is open right here. And I have a fake student ID so I can show you what it looks like as a kid. So this is what a kid would look like in my classroom. So they've got different classes that are here and there's work there that I want for the different kids. This is a pointer for us. Really old school. Cool. I'm about to look. You cannot. All right. So these are the classes that the kids would have. And you can go down below. So what happens is all posts an assignment and they can go there and they can do things with it. I've been showing you a whole lot of things and I'm trying to show you a couple of things that the kids have done so far this year so that you could play with. One of the projects that I really like the kids have been doing is I've been collaborating with Abby Adams, our librarian, and Sarah Flynn, our art teacher. And my class went to the Sheldon Museum, as I think some of the other classes from around the district have done, to see the illustrators exhibit. And we had Phoebe Stone and she did a presentation with my class about what it's like to be an illustrator. And talked about a bunch of techniques and we just really loved it. And so as part of that, we're working with narratives of different sorts of personal narratives like memoirs and some realistic fiction type narratives. Adams helped me out. She's done some lessons with my class. The one that I want to talk about is dialogue lesson. So she did a lesson with dialogue. I did a lesson with dialogue. We're talking with the kids about why authors use dialogue? What are some of those purposes? Two of the big ones are, well, it's gonna move your story along or it lets you know things about characters. So then if I go to, let's see which classes are... Oh, no, I need to switch back to my... Sorry. No. Ah, shit. I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous since I forgot which tab I'm in. Please. So it's not here, so it's down there. Pretty sure it's here, yes. Okay. So it's this tab here. So this is in the reading class. And so we have this dialogue assignment. And so the directions for the kids are right here. But I go over them, so those are good. And then there's this French, well, it's a table that I created for them in Google Docs. And so their directions were to take the books that they are reading right now and to go through and find samples of dialogue. Okay, we've had some different lessons to find some samples, type in a few lines. And so they did that. I'm gonna slide it this way a little bit so you can see what's happening on that side because that's the important side. So they did that. And then on another day, we all, so you have to understand, you know, you're on a computer and you're the only person typing on a document. That's all well good. Well, if you get 18 children typing on the same document through different boxes, it moves around a little. So they have to be very patient focused children. They did that. So on another day, we came along and... Can you show that? No. Okay. Oh, there we go. So they made comments. They had to read everybody else's dialogue samples and think about, why did the author use that dialogue sample? What's it probably doing for the story? And so they made a bunch of comments all the way down through. And the comments then, so if you click on the person's comment, you can see over here where it makes it darker. So that's where you know which comment goes to which dialogue sample. And some kids all did that. And after they've had a chance to comment on different ones, then we have a big classroom discussion. And so we're going through the different dialogue samples and then talking about, okay, so what does, if you start with this one? So this person thought that it was going to reveal the character. And the other person who had one here thought it was gonna be remove the story. And so in that case, a lot of discussion ensued within the classroom and other kids chiming in, how do you know? What's it doing? Why? And so they're really deeply engaging with the text and the lessons that they have and they're thinking about. And as they go, you'll see where it says Resolve and Reopen. Once we've decided we're done with it, we click Resolve and that comment goes away so we can go to the next one. What kind of cool are you using technology to drive the discussion? Everybody gets a chance to say their piece and write it. And then everybody gets a chance to say their piece and discussion later. Later the kids are gonna be making their own books and they're gonna be writing and hopefully using dialogue with others. So we're going with that. And if you have any questions, go through the chat room. I'm used to such quiet classes. So another thing that they did is we worked with... Hold on, let me check my voice. Yes, I did skip something, sorry. Good thing I checked. So another class, or let me choose one, is in our writing class. So it's another collaboration project for kids. We write our own newsletter. And so early in the cycle, so it comes out every two weeks, the kids have to think about what they're reporting, they have to write them. And so they post their comments here down below about all these are topics that we might write down. And then when it comes to newsletter day, we open up the document. And it's a little bit blurred for me, but then as we go down through, the kids volunteer to write about different topics. And so two kids are assigned to each topic and they have to decide what they're gonna put in there. And so they're doing their little article and they get to put in graphics if they have time. And so they're collaborating together to write their newsletter. And then another cool feature about Classroom is when we wanna do something and we need some resources for it, this was the assignment to write the thank you letter for Miss Stone. On the About tab, I can post resources for the students. So while they were busy listening to Miss Stone, I was busy taking some notes about the things she was saying because they were paying close attention. So I took a few notes for them and shared it with them. And then, well, we need to write a thank you note. So we tell them, how do I write a good thank you note? So here's what Hallmark says because they, of course, go ahead and write the thank you note. So those resources are there and the kids had a chance to take a look and then they could go ahead and write the thank you notes. One of the things that the district did this year is they purchased a tool called Read and Write. You guys all know that? So Read and Write is a piece of software that kids can use to interact with software, with stories and things. So this is an article that we read for Science. And Read and Write has opened it up. And so there's this toolbar right across the top. So that lets us do all this highlighting. So Google Docs, it'll let you like select stuff and highlight it with different colors, but then you just highlight it. What Read and Write does is it lets you really get at what's going on. So I've asked the kids to highlight this article with different colors. Each kid had their own copy of the article. And if I remember right, the green I think was... It's on the other page. So here's the article. And so the green is the science information about how energy is used. The pink is like the basic information, what, where, when of the article. And the yellow is the impact. What are we gonna take away from this about our own learning because of the nature of the article? So each child had their own copy of the article. They opened it up, they read it, they highlighted it. And then together as a whole group, we're using my copy. They're sharing their highlights in different colors and we're coming to some agreement as to what each section is. All good so far. But then here's a really cool thing that this does. So when you click Collect Highlights, you can collect them by position. So it's literally gonna create a document with all the highlights exactly in the order that they are in the article. Or because we've used our colors intentionally, we can collect them by color. And then it's gonna whirl for a moment and it's gonna create a Google Doc. And now all these things are by color. So all of our green is science information is put together. And all of our pink, basic information is together. And our impact information is together. And so then the kids have done this on their computers too, so they've done it. So then they can come right here and they can separate it and right here, they can write a summary of what is the science information because they're using their highlights. It's the software organizers afford it. And there they go. And so they can take the pieces that they've summarized and turn it into one nice little summary of the entire article. It's very powerful. The other thing that Read and Write does, and one of the very important reasons that it was purchased for the district, is because it's an accessibility software. When kids encounter things that are above their reading level, for whatever reason, it could be they're below level and it's an on-level text, or it could be they're on level and their interest or their research is taking them to something that's above their level. Read and Write is awesome. So if you possibly didn't know what a color was, you could click it and you could click Dictionary and it tells you what a color is in simple kid language. And if the kid language was even too much for you, you could click Picture Dictionary and it'll give you a picture. Or you could just check both if you wanted to. And then the other really cool features of Read and Write is this little guy here. Click to speak. And you can also use this one to just do the whole article. If I do click to speak... I'm sure my laptop's out here. And I think I did.
What made this toy plane so amazing? It could fly under its own power. It was the very first airplane to do that.
All of a sudden, reading's not a barrier for anybody. This little tool here that Read and Write also works on websites. So when kids are doing web research, that'll read any website out there. You just go, just like you select with a picture or something, and it'll read the text that's in it. Very powerful stuff. It means all of our kids are gonna have a lot more access to many more types of resources. The other thing that you all have so kindly purchased for us is this software called Mystery Science. Mystery Science is a science program, not to be your end-all, be-all for science, but to help us teach to the new, next generation science standards. It didn't exist before next generation science standards, so it's not a remake of anything. It literally was created by the Mystery Science people to help teachers teach the next generation standards. And so the way this works is there are units from kindergarten all the way through 5th grade. And they're still always constructing and adding more to it. We're right now working on this unit, which is called Energizing Everything. And on the teacher's side of it, which this is, it'll show you the lessons and how to prep for the activities and the standards that it goes to and what their assessments are. For kids, it looks like this.
There are over 200 million cars out on the roads in the United States.
So you get to meet them.
That's a lot of cars.
And there's a cool video. I want to make you listen to very much of it. Stop, please. Okay. So I won't make you listen to much, but there's a great series of videos that kids do. And then along through the video, when you get to a different section, there's questions. And when it comes to the questions, the kids stop, they're writing their science notebooks, they're thinking about it. Then they get a chance to share and we talk about it and then we move on. And when that's done, then the kids get to go to the activities. And so the activity... I meant to bring you some of the... Perfect. We have these in my room. We just built these last week. So rubber banders, you have to do a whole lot of engineering. They've got the directions, but once you get together, sometimes they work, sometimes you have to do less than anything to make it happen. It's good for the kids. You have to figure things out and connect through energy and then you get to write a chapter. There's all kinds of projects all the way through it. So we're doing the science as well as learning through the videos. There's many other cool things to listen to there about Shoreham way over there. Thank you. And well, I guess the one piece we didn't say is, the big change we did is we switched to using Chromebooks and having enough devices so that students can, each student can be on one of these and it's not, what resource do you have at home around technology? Or it's something that you can only do for a half hour of a day because then the devices are somewhere else in the building? So that was a big change.
So that was a big change that really liberated and allowed us to take advantage of these changes that are happening out there in education. Any questions about this or anything else, Shoram Lady?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. As Tracy's colleague, I just wanted to say that one of the ways that she's been able to use Google Classroom and some of these other tools in an effective way is because she's really teaching digital citizenship in her classroom. And she's done a really nice job taking our in-person school standards, translating them to these digital playgrounds so that her students are responsible digital citizens. And you can't just have a classroom discussion with 18 kids on a document without a whole lot of prep work that she didn't talk about at all. So I just wanted to highlight that. But she's done a lot of teaching, and her students have done a lot of learning with some of those 21st century skills.
Tracy, did you explore this on your own? Or was this kind of a cooperative activity throughout the district? Or...
Which thing are you talking about?
About the different programs that you're using and how you're incorporating it into your classroom. Have you done this solo? Or was this done with a bunch of other teachers who were trying to explore ways to use technology?
I think yes is probably the right answer. Technology can vaccinate some people. So yeah, I was one of the first ones to figure out about Mystery Science and saying, we should have this. And Read and Write, I used last year with one of my students who had some accessibility needs. And it turned out that that was the best program to work with that student. And then, when we did a district meeting on, what are we going to do for accessibility for everybody? I was lucky enough to be a part of that team. And we had presentations from Read and Write and some other companies. And it seemed that everybody on the team thought Read and Write was going to be the best tool for the job. They're going to be happy, sorry, I use it though. So I liked that.
Well, thank you for doing the explorations. It's fascinating.
And it's happening throughout this building too. It's not just our fourth and fifth grade classroom.
It's really nice because with the session for guided reading, my students go have other teachers for guided reading and on all those classrooms. Different teachers have them. Mrs. Gold has some of my students. She shares the classroom with them. I can see what the kids are doing. Wonderful.
It seemed that, you know, the programs that are available, the companies available, are going to be very helpful in the ID inquiry component, that you can package this inquiry part of ID into this whole learning technique in a more efficient manner. Rather than you standing up and saying, well, here's the question. Or what is the question you have for the system? Because this is constantly, it looks like you're being able to adjust it.
It is. And I can, like, through Google Classroom, I can give certain assignments just to certain students. And so if some students are looking into this aspect of something, or these are looking into this aspect, I can give them exactly what they need to go with. So that way, it's focused for them. I can keep tabs on what they're doing. They turn in assignments. I can give them feedback. It's really nice.
The other thing is it captures their thought, which is a big part of inquiry. What are you thinking? How are you adjusting your thought? So as that's getting recorded in the comments, it's different than a classroom conversation where if Tracy had her 18 students discussing something, she could keep track of some of that. But to be able to get in there and to be able to poke and prod at the right place because it's being documented will be really helpful with inquiry. All right? Thank you.
Can I ask a question just general? Last year, you came to a couple meetings and talked about some space crunches you're having here. Is that still a continuing issue with not having enough space for all the kids?
Well, I think that really came up when we were talking about if we could have a preschool building. And we currently do not have a preschool building, and that's probably the number one thing right there.
Do you still see a need in the community for that preschool program?
Yes.
And where are the kids right now going? Not going to come here for preschool?
So they're going to a couple places. A nice change is we have some of our students going to preschool.
For their pre-K program?
Yes. Yeah, so that's great. We have some, we have a lot of families utilizing providers in middle area. There is one provider here in Shoram, but she can only take a handful of the students needed. And I'm aware of families that are sending their children to preschools that are not on the state list, so they're not receiving reimbursement. Or they're home with a grandmother or something like that. And they might take advantage of it if we could have it here.
So are your classrooms... You teach a fourth and fifth grade class. Are all the grades combined? Or they...
So our current configuration is fourth and fifth is our only blended classroom.
Oh, okay. And does that change year by year, but depending on our moments? Or is it always fourth and fifth?
So Shoram, historically. We're pretty far back in our history to find a blended classroom. Last year was the first year we talked with a blended classroom. It allowed us to deal with some smaller class sizes. And it also allowed us to provide the students with a larger experience at one point. So if she has 18 students, what that's going to look like going forward, I'm not quite sure because our kindergarten is 15, our first grade's at 14, our second grade's at 13. And we're looking at having 18 come in next year. So if that keeps happening, you know, I mean, these are all things we have to look at going forward, but...
But so basically, 14 through 18 is your basic class size here?
Well, no, when we get to the upper grades, nine.
No, okay. But the trend seems to be increasing. I remember talking to you last year, or a couple years ago when we were doing the merger stuff, and you were... This is what you were predicting, so it's interesting. You were right in explaining.
Or other people were, yeah, yeah.
No, I talked to you.
Yes, oh, yeah. I was using other people's information.
Hey, credit, Stephanie's...
It's in the town hall. We look a first every year, every...
Well, I got the information from you, so thank you.
Okay. All right.
Discussion item here is District Management Group Report. This is the report that we were one of, I believe, 10 districts across the state that received a grant to have the District Management Council, now the District Management Group. They changed their name. To do a study of our special education services and provide feedback. This is a nationwide group. They have been working in Vermont for a few years now. They are also, have been contracted by Visbit and VSA to do the merger studies with merging districts. So a number of districts are working with them as they go through the merger process. We looked at their services and decided not to use them for our unification. However, felt like this grant was important as we look at what are we doing with student services looking forward, especially given where we are now and the work we're doing with unification. It was kind of perfect timing. So Vicki's going to share a little bit. We have not fully digested the report yet, but wanted to share with you some kind of initial thoughts.
So we got the draft preliminary report about two weeks ago. So we're just scratching the surface of it. So they were, in essence, two purposes of the study. One for the state as a whole, which came out through the Agency of Education, through Rebecca Holcomb, who basically said that the purpose of the project is to build local capacity, to better manage systems and deliver services. And that all of our systems strive to be the best. And that DMC's mission was to help us figure out how to do that. And then, for our purpose, like Peter said, we were one of 10 pilots, SDs, SUs, that underwent this study. We had to apply to be part of this study. But we looked at it for our purposes. It goes above and beyond just special education. It really looks at the system of services that we have for all students who struggle academically and behaviorally. And then it really looks at, it's a systematic study that is looking at our current system of services, programs, procedures, and staffing. And then it was both quantitative. So they looked at a lot of our data that we had in terms of child count, in terms of our outcomes of data. There were multiple sources that they took a look at. And it was qualitative in that they did multiple focus groups. And they were onsite for two days. They worked with me prior for about three months. And then we collected schedules for about another month afterwards. And part of it is to help us make thoughtful and informed decisions about how we serve students most appropriately. So there were several stages. There were four stages to the larger study. First was a focus group in a school visit in terms of their being onsite. So they met with multiple focus groups. And I don't have them all up here, but parents, board members, administrators, service providers, paraprofessionals, regular educators, special educators, interventives, and a number of different people that are impacted by services. So they spent a day doing that. Stage two was, or they spent a day doing their focus groups. And then they went, they visited each and every school to look at how supports were delivered in each school. Stage two was data collection. So between February and March, we had multiple individuals, anyone who worked with a student who was struggling, paraprofessional, interventionist, classroom teacher, special educator. We have clinicians from CSAC that work with some of our students. We had them all fill out a schedule. And then, once those schedules were filled out, DMG went through and did a pretty significant look at what the schedules looked like. And then their last was, we did lockdown, we did schedules. And then the review and the report, which July, they gave us some like preliminary, preliminary. And we got the actual report a couple of weeks ago. So this is literally kind of skimming the very top of the report that you will get. There were three commendations that they initially started out with. And the first was the creation of the Special Ed Evaluation Team. And this is something that within ACSU, I've been here now 14 years. We've probably been talking about the creation of an evaluation team for about 11 at this point. And we had no way to do it until we centralized special education in 2012. So the centralized Special Ed Evaluation Team has been up and running since about 2012. They also commended us for a data-rich environments in our elementary schools. And that it's metrics that are collected throughout the year on multiple, for multiple different measures for all students. And they also commended us around our school leaders, board members being included in that. And staff are committed to meeting the needs of students, period. And that their feeling was, after the focus groups, after looking at what we do, after looking at all of our data, that we have a commitment here at ACSD that goes above and beyond when we look at serving students overall. So as they did their study, they focused on six key questions. And these were key questions that were determined at the state level for these pilot schools. And the first one was, do elementary schools provide time outside of the literacy block for struggling readers with and without IEPs to receive additional support? The second was, at the elementary level, do struggling readers with and without IEPs receive support from a teacher skilled in the teaching of reading? Third, middle school and high school grades, do they provide extra time daily for struggling learners with and without IEPs on reading and on math? Fourth, are teachers with deep content expertise in math and in reading supporting struggling learners with and without IEPs at the secondary level? Fifth, across all levels, is there a thoughtful and proactive approach to behavior support as it relates to mild, moderate behaviors as well as students with severe behaviors? And then finally, do schools embrace inclusive practices? So I literally, each one of these has about two and a half to three pages of findings. This is skimming. So this is a very brief kind of report of what they found. So in terms of key question number one, do elementary schools provide time outside of the literacy block for struggling readers with and without IEPs to receive additional support? The best practice in this area that they have researched is that students need extra time to master elementary reading. For an elementary student, they need at least 30 minutes a day of extra explicit instruction in reading above and beyond what they get in their typical classroom. So if a reading block is 90 minutes, they should be getting 120, with 90 minutes being in the classroom and 30 minutes being explicit instruction above and beyond. So our current practice, it varies across the schools. It is rare that any school, any school here provides five full days of additional support. Students with IEPs typically receive pull-out services by special educators, most of which is during that literacy block. Or they're in-class supported by a paraprofessional. Students who are, who receive reading intervention through an interventionist are typically pulled out after their reading block or outside of their reading block. So for further discussion and further consideration, we have, what they suggested was to do a master scheduling in order to create an environment enrichment intervention time daily and creating consistent guidelines for when students should be supported. So again, just a very brief overview of what those sections look like. Key question two, at the elementary level, do struggling readers, both with and without IEPs, receive service or support from a teacher skilled in the teaching of reading? So again, the best practice is, struggling students receive the extra time from elementary reading teachers who have deep content knowledge. Special educators, in a lot of respects, are specialists in the disability, might need to master multiple content areas. And so the best practice is deep content knowledge. Our current practice, again, varies. Some schools have reading interventions. Some schools don't. Most reading interventions work with students in small groups. Other schools have reading recovery teachers. Those services are typically done one-on-one. And others receive reading through a special educator or paraprofessional. Those are also typically done one-on-one. And part of what the report will show is that a significant amount of our services are done one-on-one. So for further discussion and future consideration, thinking about through ID, Caitlin presented to you a campus model, to take a look at the utilization of that campus model, to assign staff so that staff is less fragmented, point two here, point three here, point four here. And it allows a creation of complementary master schedules so that we can truly get to meet the needs of all students, which then leads to us taking less staffing patterns. The third question, in regards to the middle and high school, extra time for struggling learners? For the high school, for secondary level, for seventh through 12th grade, instead of just a half an hour of extra time, best practice is an hour that it will take students, because they're further behind, it'll take students an extra hour per day of explicit reading instruction to catch up or to make progress. And most of that should be a preteach to reteach and to correct understandings. Our current practice in the middle school and the high school is that some additional time is provided, but we don't have an overarching framework. At the middle school, we do have SOR with a licensed reading teacher for reading. And mostly at the high school, special educators and paraprofessionals who do pull out to support versus supporting in the classroom. And then their recommendation for further discussion or consideration is defining standards and guidelines to identify and ensure struggling students consistently receive intervention. We need to review our service delivery model as well as staff schedules and patterns. In terms of deep content knowledge at the secondary level, best practice, again, is that content expertise of secondary math and math and literacy by somebody who has that deep content knowledge. In terms of practice, MAMS has content expertise for FAMIS. Or one is a math classroom and one is a reading classroom. In other areas, special educators and paraprofessionals also support students, but they may or may not be expertise. They may or may not have expertise in that content area that they're providing support in. And then again, for further discussions and future considerations, their recommendation is to look at shifting resources and develop a model where instruction and support is provided by staff with content expertise. Seek a deeper understanding of the types of students' needs and the staffing patterns that are necessary to meet those needs. Question number five, is there a thoughtful and proactive approach to behavior support as it relates to mild, moderate behaviors as well as more severe needs? And again, best practice is a high-quality system for behavior support that starts with effective... effective schooling, class-wide expectations, routines, positive proactive encouragement, and student-centered discipline practices. A lot of schools are using PBIS, a lot of schools are using responsive classroom, and some other, in some other reparative justice and some other uses. Our current practice again varies by school. Some, we do have a district-wide board certified behavioral specialist, which is the VCPA, and she supports all of the schools. In some places, we have special educators that provide support for students with behavior, and other places we have paraprofessionals, other places we work with CSAC. But this is a larger conversation across the district, is how do we better support the needs of students with social, emotional needs? So again, for further discussion, expanding our social, emotional supports, identifying the strengths that our staff has, where is our expertise? What is our current practice? We're in the process of doing this, facilitating an integrated team approach and aligning expectations across the district. And fifth, do the schools embrace inclusionary practices? And a lot of what they talk about is around inclusionary practices, that teacher quality is probably more than any other school factor, including curriculum planning, time on task, that teacher quality matters the most. So to have high-quality classroom teachers who are providing high-quality first instruction is where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. And students who are already behind need to make greater gains each year, and it's an investment on core instruction, and that's critical. Current practice, schools have prioritized creating multi-tiered systems of services. For many of you, you've heard of this MTSS. We have schools who are in the process of building that. It is not perfect by any means, we still have more to go. We need to look at a strong foundation of literacy, especially in our elementary schools. And even with moving towards more inclusive practices, we have many teachers who, based on that focus groups, felt ill-equipped to provide supports to struggling students, both with and without IEPs. So how do we then support our teachers to be able to do the work that they need to be doing? And again, for further discussion and future considerations, to review our current support model and align with the best practices. So that was kind of your six key questions. They also have an approach, an integrated approach and an interconnected approach to best practices. And their first that they talk a lot about is having a rigorous general ed curriculum. We are working on this, we are going to continue to work on this. This works really well, and I think is going to be graded very well with the IB framework that we're moving forward with. The second is a coordinated and sustained focus on reading. Reading is the biggest area, if we can get kids to read by grade three and stay on grade level, we have less incidence potentially of students with special education to behavioral needs down there. We need to give students extra time to learn, and it's extra time outside of math and literacy that we shouldn't be pulling them from their main subject areas. And again, this is student-dependent, but the best practices leave them in their classroom, allow them to have their tier-one support with their classroom teacher, and then give them extra. Looking at targeted interventions, again, content, strong teachers, and then making sure that we have data to track progress and inform improvement. We collect a lot of data, are we collecting the right data to look at the right points? And are we using that data to inform our instruction?
Can I ask a question? You said not to pull them out of their core subjects like reading and math. Where does the extra time come from?
Bingo. That's, that's, that's what we need to look at, is where does the extra time come from? And are there pieces where students really need that core instruction, and then we might move and work with them in a small group within the classroom? But if they continue to miss that core instruction, to get the basic skills that they're continuing, all we're doing is building this, where they're going to get further and further behind. So that's, and that's part of the puzzle, is this is, this is a, this is a three-to-five year overhaul in a lot of respects of our systems and really taking a look at what it means.
I, I understand that, but I, I have seen these programs implemented where the kid gets taken out of recess or physical education or some other non-necessary class, and it quickly becomes a punishment. If they struggle as a reader, and they need that physical activity during the day, then they're pulled out of physical education to get extra time in reading. I, I would just ask you to be mindful.
Yep, and I think, and I think what, what SHORM has done with their WIN program is exactly what we're talking about. It's, it's a half an hour that they have done that doesn't take away from anything else, that students get what they need. And so we really need to take a look at that, how we're allocating staff, how we're utilizing our schedules, what we're building in and when.
We also do have an increase in the Student Day next year as well, which will help in, in most schools.
Yep. And then our next steps, and there's two pieces to this, kind of within ACSD and then within Vermont. Within ACSD, it's a thorough reading and consideration of the District Management Group Report and really taking a look closely. It's, it's, it's only about 28 pages long, but it's a pretty dense information in there, lots of statistics about how staff use their time. To engage stakeholders in areas noted regarding further discussion and future considerations, and to develop a three-year plan to enhance our core instruction for systems of interventions and service delivery. So those are really our next three steps. In terms of the state, the District Management Group is compiling a report for the AOE that takes a look at not only the findings that they had here, but the findings of the other nine districts, and without, you know, identifying whose was what, they're compiling all the findings. And taking a look at how each pilot site compares to the best practices. And the best practices that I outlined here are just a few of the ones that they provided. They will then share their reports with the districts, all 10 districts, the superintendent and special ed administrator from each district will come together, have a conversation and dialogue around those findings, see what we can do to learn from one another and help one another. And then, and then basically, once that's done, discuss trends and implementation strategies, and then move this forward in the state. And in our district. Barry?
I have a question. In several areas, you talked about content-rich instruction, high-quality teachers, secondary content area. So it sounds like your teachers, the quality of your teachers and what their qualifications are, are really something that needs to be looked at?
I don't necessarily think qualifications, but really taking a look at who has expertise and in what area. And then, when we take a look at special educators, what is, what are the areas of expertise? Most special educators are expert in a number of different things and not necessarily content area expertise. So I think part of that is figuring out, what are the staff that we have, what are they experts in, and how do we shift potentially some resources to better?
How do you determine whose, what different people's strengths are? Is it based on coursework? Is it based on evaluation? What, what can you use to identify who has that knowledge?
That's a good question, I think we need to make some determinations about that. And Caitlin, you've been talking a lot about it without the, kind of that, that core instruction really needs to be high-quality, core, tier-one instruction, and that's something that ACSD has been working on year after year and year, and I think IP will bring, will, will add to the solidification of that tier-one instruction.
Are you going to include parare educators and the training piece? Because they, they do a lot of the?
Yes.
The work?
Yep. Yep, so, yeah. So whatever work they need to do, they need to do.
And is there going to be any money or funding through this grant that you want to work with? Will there be any extra financial resources to help you make this happen?
That would be monthly, my sense is no. What we did get as part of this grant is typically to engage the Services of District Management Group for this level of a study, it's about $50,000. The state offset a majority of that, so it cost us $5,000. And then what we get is, is the work of the other districts as well in this.
And just to add to your, your question about expertise and, and who's teaching whom, a, a big part of what we know that we need to look at is we have really a different model in every school right now in terms of how kids with, you know, deficiencies in reading or math or, or in other areas, that support looks different in every school. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to just use this report alone, I mean, there's other work that we're doing. But as we look at all of our systems, we want to make sure that we're doing the most we can and we're sharing expertise across all of our schools. A lot of these, these different systems have grown up over time. And, and so a lot of what we're doing right now is assessing what's in place in all of our schools. And with IB, and Vicki was mentioning tier-one, and tier-one really is just kind of general education, that's the most important thing. So, you know, I think historically, we've, we've looked a lot at pulling out and, and treating, meaning if a student is behind a grade level, we, we pull them out, we try to treat them to get them back. And, you know, right now in education, the real focus is not on fixing things over here, but really working to make sure in the classroom that, that that work's happening and that differentiation is happening. So that, that's a, a big part of our focus, is not just looking at creating all these systems and, and pull-outs, interventions outside and just kind of allow general ed to go on as it is, but really look at general ed as a means of serving those students. There are still needs for intervention, that's not going to ever go away, but it's looking at it differently and making sure that we're focused more on general ed as opposed to thinking, when the general ed's not working, we just look to intervention to fix all the problems that kids are having in general ed.
So the student doesn't have to be on IEP to get this, what you're saying is they can also get?
They might not be on an IEP, yeah.
Right, and that's, and that's what this looked at, is it looked at all students who were struggling, not just those on IEPs. Yeah, because if we can, if we can meet the needs of kids who are struggling early on, we may be able to allow them not to be able, or not to, not to become eligible for special education.
Sorry, Ruth.
No, Victoria. I know that the focus of this was on kids who were struggling, but it sounds like there's a certain, or a lot of analysis and review of the overall specialization and discussion of differentiation. I wonder if, does it ever come up about gifted and talented?
It, it talks a lot about giving kids what they need. So, so they focused on struggling learners, but I think you could take it and really flip it and look at all needs of all students, and how do we develop a system where kids get what they need.
And so is there, in the ongoing discussion, I mean, you're saying that we could do that, are, are there plans to do that?
I'm going to defer.
So to, I mean, I would say that in terms of gifted and talented, a lot of what we're doing with IB is really trying to personalize for kids more. We've been talking about proficiency for a long time, and we now have graduation requirements that are proficiency-based. So the, the grounding of proficiency-based is really, instead of one thing for everyone, everyone gets the same thing, that within that general ed curriculum, there is differentiation happening. And part of that is, i- instead of the teacher controlling everything, the students have more agency in making decisions in the classroom, which then allows for that differentiation. I think Tracy mentioned that tonight in terms of how she works with different kids in Google Classroom, that's kind of an, I mean, one example, a, a small example of what that looks like. I think a fully fleshed-out, talented and gifted program is different. And I, I don't think we're moving in a direction of having just a track, an a tracking system. Tracking itself is, has some real challenges with it. But I, I think when you look at what the IB framework, where the IB framework brings students, and especially moving through to the diploma program, I think it is going to allow a lot more opportunity for kids that, that want to push themselves more and that, that may not be getting what they need.
So that's definitely not happening in all classrooms right now. I know you're aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you go back to the previous slide? And I know this is a sort of like boiled-down version, but...
Very boiled-down.
So those six things don't seem very groundbreaking to me, and I'm wondering if you found anything that surprised you, or if this was just reinforcing what you already knew?
I don't think there was necessarily anything that surprised me. I think how they come about looking at it and how they're implementing ideas in some ways and fashion, both across the state and across the different places that they've gone to, that's what intrigued me and sparked some ideas. But, yeah, none of these are aha.
Yeah, I mean, content-strong teachers, good teachers, like, that's pretty basic. I think you already knew that.
And best practices, it's not best practices that DMG has come up with.
Right.
There's, there's a listing of all of the resources that they utilize to determine best practices, and those that have gotten the biggest bang for their buck. And I would say that between the leadership team here, there are no surprises, we've seen these before, it's how do we move to the next step so we know it? Now what? And how do we take some of these and really think about them through the lens of IB and through an implementation process to make sure that everybody's doing the same? Or not the same, but that we're, we're more insistent in our systems of services.
And will this, this, this help you do that? And does it take you, does it have a next step?
The report itself has those, those future discussions and future considerations for us to be able to really have thoughtful and deep conversation on and then develop plans for you.
Because I'm willing to bet you could have come up with that list without, like, a year ago, without spending $50,000 on this report. I know, we've only spent five, but the state's been 50.
The benefit of this report is that there's also a comparative analysis, so it does give us some data, and we can't, we haven't provided it yet because it's in draft form and we can't, it's going to be finalized soon?
Hopefully soon, yeah.
Okay. So once it's finalized, we'll, we'll provide it to everyone. But it, it does provide analysis of our staffing and other staffing, national staffing. So it, it also does give us some comparative data, which will be helpful.
So make sure we're getting our money's worth.
Yeah, no, we are.
One other question. No, go ahead.
So I was going to say, one of the big pieces of it is the analysis of the staff schedules was, was fascinating.
The time on task, the?
How individuals spend their time.
Time study.
In terms of, so similar to a time study, it looks at academics, behavior, other things, and a, a couple of other pieces, and then, then are services done small, or one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-three, four, five?
And that will be in the final report?
That will be in the final report, yeah.
So one other thing that has been discussed in the past at least is the question of paraprofessionals and the use of paraprofessionals. Did this show anything in one way or the other about the use of paratime?
Yes, yep. And, and before, before I give anything, I, I really need to take a look at that carefully.
Okay.
Yep. But, but it was really, what I will say is, again, that careful consideration of how we're utilizing our staffing that we're utilizing, and that the teaching of content really needs to be with expertise.
One, I just wanted my one comment on the, the opportunity you used to have this sort of an outside group come in and look. It allows objective, critical thinking. Instead of you coming in as the supervisor saying, this is what we need to do, so it steps, it takes it off your shoulders, meaning the critical. So I, I think it's helpful to do so.
And, and I think the other piece that's really nice is, is with the fact that there's 10 of us that underwent this, and there were about five, I think, that went, that underwent the study before the pilot. It really has given us an opportunity to do some, some much deeper conversations around what's being found in other SUs of how to, especially up in the Chittenden region, how do we move this forward, not just within our school, within our district, but within the region and then within the city.
I had a question regarding paras, and maybe you won't want to address it, but do you have a general idea of how much of the services currently being offered are being offered with paras as opposed to content teachers?
We have quite a bit, and I haven't gotten into that level of detail yet, but we do have quite a bit of not only support services, but there is some direct instruction provided
Any other questions for Vicki? Okay, great. Thanks, Vicki, that was really, really informative. Look forward to hearing more when you have information.
Someone just keep going?
Yes, we'll continue on with Peter.
So I wanted to talk briefly about... So, I wanted to talk briefly about projected state budget mandate coming. I attended a VSA All-State meeting two weeks ago, and there was a presentation by the AOE, and by VSBA, actually, at that meeting. And what I have been hearing around the state was reiterated in that the belief from VSA, VSBA, and the AOE right now is that Governor Scott will be attempting to, through some means, and we don't yet know what that will be, keeping budgets flat for FY19. And by flat, I mean, cost per pupil not increasing in districts. So, even though we have a number of factors going into FY19 that are going to increase our budget, we have to make amends for those in some other way to keep our budget flat. This was also shared at the VSBA regional meeting, and I think those that attended will be talking probably later on, it's on the agenda later on, to talk about that. But I did want to just kind of set that out there. We did talk about this with the Finance Committee, we're meeting again with the Finance Committee next week to, I think, to talk more about it. And I'm going to hand it over to Josh, who has a quick memo to share, which he shared with the Finance Committee, and wanted everyone just to kind of get a sense of the lay of the land and where we are. In terms of history and looking at when Governor Scott was elected, and where we are right now with our, at the state level, you all remember last year that there was, when he was elected, there was a call to bring budgets back, and to revise budgets, which, of course, didn't happen, and no one knows whether that was serious or not, but it did certainly cause quite a stir after we had just already gone through the whole budgeting process. At the end of the last session, or actually after the session, was the health recapture, where we're sending some of our money back to the state based on where we've settled on our, on negotiations. Scott's staff, this year, one of Scott's staff was at the VSBA regional meeting, stated Scott will not allow taxes to increase this year. So, we don't know if this is going to be, we don't know what shape this will take, we don't know if there will be talk about a variable kind of limit, where districts at different spending levels will be impacted differently. If you all remember, a couple of years ago, we had variable caps. So, I think this will probably look different. Again, not sure exactly what form it will take, but did want to get that out to all of you. It's something that we're thinking about a lot as we work with the Finance Committee and with everyone in the Central Office and our leaders, as we look at our budgets and think about next year. Do you want to talk a little bit about the memo and just...
Sure, we'll just briefly roll through the pieces and parts. So, salaries, teacher contract increases, make sure you're 3%. Support staff, I have 3% on there, and they're a dipass. That's typically, on average, what it's been. Non-union staff increase, for as long as, always been 3%. Obviously, that's not required by any of them. Payroll costs, as your salaries go up, your payroll costs go up, so that's about $648,000 there. The health insurance, we just got a memo from VIH, and it's, depending on which healthcare plan the person is on, various healthcare plans will increase anywhere from 6% to 17%. That's the premium. The CDHP goal, which is what most of the healthcare negotiations are wrapped around, and many of our employees have been selecting at the future level, that is a 10.1% projected increase. They have to submit their increases off to the Department of Management Regulation, who has to approve those. So, if that was approved, we'd be looking at about $444,000. State healthcare recapture, that's, I can't remember the act off the top of my head, but that's a...
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. So, that's the 30%, 35%, whatever it is portion, that's $166,000. Last year, just to jog your memory, we used $791,000 to offset taxes of the fund balance that left. We moved some of it into capital reserve, and the rest went to offset taxes. Federal funding, so this year we have approximately $488,000 in Title I. We, up until we actually received that funding in May?
May.
May, that's when the awards come out. We were uncertain, I think, at the time, in March, April, and through May, they were telling us to expect somewhere between 60% and 80% of what we had submitted for. We ended up in Title I, getting all of it. Title II, we ended up getting about, I want to say 20,000 or 30,000 less than what we had submitted for. Title II, I'm sorry, Title II-A. Title II-A, this year, we're getting $175,000. This happened one, that every year, and right now, they're telling us to not expect anything in Title II-A. And that's, a lot of Title II-A has gone to training, professional development. So, total, if you add all that together, is about $2 and a quarter of the dollar. So, some enrollment data, FY18, and we're looking just straight at enrollment, because equalized pupil is a terribly complicated number to figure out, especially with our pre-K issues that we had last year that artificially lowered our number. We should start to see some of that number come back this year, but I need a couple of weeks in a dark, small room that may bother me to figure out that. So, anyway, anyway, moving forward, as we've talked about it, enrollment, that's the actual number of kids that we have in our school, and that's the number that we know and can somewhat accurately predict right now. Equalized pupil, we cannot, and equalized pupil, we don't know until the middle of December, anyway. So, enrollment's what we're looking at right now. So, a decrease of eight students, eight students this year as opposed to last year. We are rejecting a decrease of 55 students next year. And it's because there's a very large class, it's a senior class right now, so that's something that would definitely be taken into consideration, or we should take into consideration. And then, 119 students over the next five years, and that's holding kindergarten enrollment at the five-year average. Facilities, we talked about the facilities assessment last meeting, and Spurs America are now going through identifying and prioritizing that list, and we'll come back to us, and we'll come back to you with a list of items, and then figure out how much we want to suggest or recommend, and we can all have those discussions as well. Talked about the landscape, and right now, FY17 fund balance, it looks like it's approximately $900,000. That's unaudited, our auditors come in two weeks, and so we'll be able to firm that number up shortly. And that's that.
Questions?
Lots to look forward to, Josh.
A lot of dark rooms, Josh.
Don't come out.
You may not want to come out.
Does anyone have any questions for Josh?
No, but I do have a comment. I hate to be the Cassandra in the room, but we did try to hang on to that surplus rather than give it back to the voters last year, and this board voted to give it back to the voters. As I expressed in that meeting, given the new administration, that they would do something like this, we are now going to be in a much more difficult position without those reserve funds.
I will say, but part of the reason that I think we compromised on that was that we didn't want to be in the position down the road of having that one year where we had a large fund balance that we utilized totally to what you're saying, saving it, and then, because this is not going to stop just this year, correct? I think that's, I mean, the administration's going to be the same one for a while.
A lot of it's going to be impacted by our enrollment. I mean, that's going to, you know, I think our hope is that as we grow as a district, that our enrollment will respond to that. So, that's, I mean, that's kind of part of our plan in moving forward. We can only control that to some degree. I think, you know, in terms of what happens at the state level with funding, it's so hard to predict. Every year that I've been here, there's been a siren call about the sky falling, and then on the back end of that, there's some change, but not so much. We may get to a point, though, where things really start to change, it's hard to know. I think when you look at Vermont values about our schools, about class size, about small schools, are very, very different from the rest of the country. And thus far, we've been able to maintain that, whether, you know, I don't see that changing dramatically. But I think some of the tension right now is just the affordability factor, and that seems to be what is talked about every year in terms of property taxes, and, you know, what can we afford and support? But I think there are a lot of unknowns, and I think our approach is to be sure that we're on level ground, that we're thinking about where our enrollment's headed. You know, one of the factors that's on the memo is we're losing a class, a very large class at the high school this year, that are seniors this year, it's a loss of about 50 students. That will impact us down the road, because equalized pupil is looking backwards, not forwards. But if we don't respond to that now, then we have an even bigger cliff later. So, that's one of the things that we're, you know, we're wanting to respond to, so that we are on level ground, so that when something comes out of the legislature, and unfortunately, things that come out of the legislature are not always the most rational or the most student-centered, that we can be in a place to not have to be constantly moving back and forth.
I'm sorry, Jen.
Are pre-K enrollments included in our per-pupil counts?
They're included in our enrollment number, and they are included in equalized pupil, but they only count as .46. Four-six. Not quite all of them.
Is that likely because they're not in school all day long, every day?
Yes.
I wonder if it's really .46% of the time? It's just funky.
I can't explain it.
Yeah.
And it's not really, when you think about it, it's not, it doesn't equal .46 of the cost of a regular equalized pupil, because that's, you know, around $18,000, whereas that .46 really is a $3,000 support for pre-K. So, it's, in terms of how it's figured, it doesn't quite make a lot of sense.
But they help for something, at least.
They do, they do, they do. And part of what we had happen last year, if you remember, was we had counted initially, the state had said you can count them up to .92. So, we had counted them at .92 for FY17, and then we paid for that in FY18. So, we also think that will right itself going into next year. So, that's one silver lining from this very dark and dreary report. We may see our equalized pupil number buoy up slightly.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, so, thank you, Peter. Report of the Board, we have an action item tonight, the Visbit VIH appointment. Peter, I take it, is going to be, he was going to check his calendar, right? He is going to be available?
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay. So, we need to have a motion to nominate Peter to be our Visbit VIH vote person at the...
Peter Conlin.
Pardon me?
Peter Conlin.
Yes, I'm sorry, not Peter Burrow, Peter Conlin, thank you, Jen. At the VSBA conference.
Annual meeting.
Annual meeting, yes.
So, moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So, all in favor of making Peter Conlin our vote person? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Substantive? Okay, so Peter will be...
Can I just ask a question? On our agenda next time, is the discussion about what they're talking about, correct? Is that what Peter said in his email to the Board? He said there was, because we're, or was that the VSBA in the meeting?
I think it was the VSBA.
Do you guys know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a VSBA one, okay.
Yes, because he was going to talk about the resolutions and how we want to vote as a board.
Okay, that's good, okay.
Right.
Okay.
But that's the next one.
Which would be like three days before that meeting.
It's three days.
Yeah, three or four days before, yeah.
Got it, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Next is discussion on the board meeting format. Peter and Peter have been talking, and they are thinking that we'll have our regular board meeting on the first meeting of the month, and then the second board meeting would be used for committees to meet, and then we could get together after, if necessary, for board work, or perhaps to work on the norms that we were discussing earlier, but to use that second meeting for more of a other things than just a regular general board meeting. So, I wish our people...
Do you want me to share a little more?
Yeah.
Just based on that conversation. So, Peter and I were just kind of talking about, he had been kind of asking about, you know, number of meetings, and flow of meetings, and we were also talking about committees and how committees are meeting right now. And we're kind of discussing that it would be good to have a constant time where committees come together and meet. Scheduling the committee meetings can be pretty challenging and hard to get everybody to those meetings, so having them on a set time would be really beneficial. It would also allow for, if the communities, the committees are meeting on that second board meeting of the month, it gives them an opportunity to come back if they wanted to engage the board on questions. So, sometimes a committee will meet, and then three weeks elapse, and there's not really an agenda item for them to, you know, there might be a report out, but having that be on the same night, I think, could be pretty powerful. And it also gives the board time to continue to have conversations. Obviously, it's a public meeting, but to have it be after the committees meet, to have a kind of a general session where the board's talking about, it could be a topic. You know, you mentioned board norms, or board development itself, or budget. You know, the Finance Committee could lead a conversation with the board on the budget and thinking, and I think it would be helpful, and it would provide a little bit more organization and structure, and make it, I think, easier for a lot of busy folks to get to a committee meeting without having to kind of move all sorts of other things around.
And that would allow us, I asked this question before, but that would allow us as a general board to be able to function. I think it's a good idea, but is there enough room in our two-hour schedule twice a month to accommodate that?
In terms of other, like, agenda items and things like that?
Yeah, other agenda items. I mean, there's times when you can't always foresee those, but can be others that would be different.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would allow for, if there was an urgent agenda item that had to be, you know, something came up today that we need to bring to the board in the next meeting, actually, we have something which we're going to talk to the Finance Committee about next week, that we would hope to put on the agenda for the 16th. So, there still could be agenda items, it's not that there wouldn't be agenda items, but it would allow for, rather than that being just a regular board meeting, it's really kind of a committee debrief meeting and bring people together in terms of the work that's happening, as opposed to knocking through a long agenda with, you know, jumping from thing to thing. So, it's just been thinking about board development as a whole, that it, I think it would be beneficial.
So, would the committees be meeting simultaneously? So, in one room, the policy committee would be in the other room, and then the full board would potentially meet afterwards? Is that what you're suggesting?
Right, right. Could be, yeah, could, yeah.
Timing or logistically-wise?
Yeah.
So, would, we would have to warn a full board meeting every week?
Yeah.
Every time?
Yeah, yeah.
With the potential that the full board might be.
Yeah, yeah.
But we wouldn't necessarily know what the agenda items are, so how would that logistically work?
No, I think there would be, I mean, my sense of how it would work, and it's too bad Peter's not here, just because he and I talked about it a lot. too bad Peter's not here, just because he and I talked about it a lot, but if, if the board wanted to talk about board development or talk about the budget, that would be warned as, you know, discussion FY '19 budget development or something. And so that the finance committee, in the finance committee meeting at 6:30 to 7:30 would be talking about both their understanding of here's where we think we are, and then also be thinking about things they might want to bring to the board for full discussion.
That same meeting?
That same, that same night. So you would have to be planning ahead to think about what kinds of things, you know, what needs to be on that agenda afterwards.
So I think, I think the idea is interesting, and I appreciate that you guys are trying to find a structure that will make us more productive and make the committees more productive and accommodate schedules, and there are lots of factors, and I think that it's great that you're talking about it. I'm concerned on a couple of things. One is that if we're all meeting in our committees separately, we wouldn't necessarily be able to go to another committee meeting, you know. You know, I would like to go to the policy committee when they're talking about the finance policies, for example, just to help, you know, provide context or whatever, and I wouldn't be able to do that necessarily while also meeting in the finance committee.
Right. It would be easier, though, too, because...
It would be logistically easier if we take a break and go over. Yeah, that, I mean, I understand, that would, that's true. But if we both had lots of work to do, we wouldn't be able to be in two committee meetings at the same time. So that, that would be one concern. And then the other is, I think it's valuable, even though it's sometimes logistically challenging to have some time in between committee meetings and the full board meeting to prepare. So if the finance committee makes recommendations about, you know, this is what we think we want to recommend to the board for parameters for budget development or whatever, we need some time to create, you know, write up those parameters and provide them to the full board to look at before their meeting, and so they can think about it, and so the public is aware of what we're doing, so they can come and weigh in. And I just think that immediately, board meet, you know, committee meetings and board meetings doesn't give us that time to prepare good documents and to think about things and to engage the public. And so that would be my concern, is it's sort of like this hurry up, let's get things done kind of process, rather than deliberative and time that we might need for tough decisions.
Well, I would think that that, whatever you talk, I mean, if there was something that was an immediate, that didn't require a lot of work, it could be broad, but if, if something needed to be put onto the next meeting agenda, that could certainly, you know, in two weeks, that would provide a pretty decent timeline to do that. And maybe, you know, I mean, what Peter had said, which we had been talking back and forth since the training, was how does, he was wondering, how, how do we provide time for the board to work on what we started in the training? It doesn't really fit into the context of a regular, you know, our regular agenda necessarily, the training. So I think that was the initial idea, is have the committees meet and then meet as a board, to really kind of continue to talk about the training and talk about, you know, kind of board development in general, was kind of the initial idea.
But that could be separate from the other work.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's worth considering, but I think there are just some logistical and time concerns that are worrying about.
Yes, I sort of can share those concerns, and I would be a little bit worried that at the board meeting, it would just be a regurgitation of what the committees discussed and are before, without any sort of rethinking. So I think a break is a good idea.
Steve?
Actually, I really like the idea, and would it solve the problem to say that the agendas for the committee meetings could also be warned as potential items that we would talk about in the general committee meeting? And when, the structure of that meeting might look a little different, when we say the finance committee is not ready to report on this, 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 and this, but we would like to discuss this, and then defer those action items that were more time, as Ruth was talking about, to the following board meeting, which would be the more full deliberative like we normally have. I mean, I'm rather intrigued by the idea to be able to get together and handle the board's business, you know, but then, on those things that we need a decision before the next board meeting, it would, it would still pipe well into that, and would that be possible? I mean, I don't want to violate any public meeting laws or anything like that, to say that these four committee meetings could be discussed in the final board meeting. Do you understand what I mean? Would that be a clear enough warning?
Leave it open, yeah, what you're saying.
Well, but we usually, like, when you warn a board meeting, you have to warn an agenda as well.
I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to have something like...
Yeah, there may be documents to review.
And how would this interact, space with the moving from school to school we talked about, too?
Well, the, the third meeting is at, in Middlebury. I mean, that's the third of the month, the third Monday of the month, is in Middlebury, so I would assume that would continue in Middlebury.
The first meeting's the one you were going to?
That's the one, like, tonight, is the one that's...
Rotating.
Yeah, rotating, yeah, yeah.
I'm for, if for nothing else, there's a regular time for committee meetings. I found it almost impossible to even get a quorum, just through last year. It'll be really nice, and I think it's a neat kind of experiment and fun to see how we're doing. I think we can accommodate, make a, you know, we can take a 10-minute break, people can run around.
I mean, we could also just start with...
Oh, to go to their meetings.
You could come to our meeting, and we can focus on that, and it's not a big deal. I think we would do it.
We could also start out just as, you know, to, you know, because it's unclear how that second part would work, to have the committees meet same time, all committees meet, and then treat the second part as if there are agenda items, at least in the near term, if there's an, if there are agenda items or item that needs to be warned, as in a regular meeting, warn that as a regular meeting, and talk about it. I think central office would try to focus probably on the first one, to allow the second one to be, if something comes up, or if the board did want to have an agenda item to, you know, the norms are still out there and haven't come back yet to review the norms, that could be on the next, you know, in two weeks, that could be on the agenda, is review board norms. So treat it as a, as a regular meeting, but try not to, I think, central office would try not to stack that with bunches of thises and that's.
We could, we could use that second meeting to deal with committee items that don't make, can't quite get done in two weeks, but it could be done in four weeks. Kind of interesting, because I just realized...
It would require a lot of, like, agenda item tracking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, then we stop doing stuff.
What on the other side, as Perry said, is trying to find, even with committees of four people, trying to find a consistent time where those four people meet, so that we actually have a quorum to discuss, and we've struggled with that with protocol of policy, trying to...
But wouldn't it also allow us to continue our conversation from the career center, so that we could...
It's possible.
Continue that work that we did, that we did warm part of that?
Yeah. The board development work.
We would just have to be careful that, that, you know, going over into other committee meetings, that we didn't get half the board or two-thirds of the board. Then it would be a board meeting. We'd have to be worried about quorum in terms of...
Stop.
Yeah, like, you're not...
You'd think it was...
Which is awkward and not, not appropriate, so we just have to be careful about that.
You'd have to be having really good campaigns.
It's going to have to be some really good topics for that to happen, I would say.
It could happen if the other stuff is boring, and he wants to go.
Oh, right. Do we, do we need a motion, or are we just going to do this?
It's just a discussion item right now, but, so people are feeling generally okay about giving it a try.
I'd like to hear more, I definitely would like to hear more.
Could you or Peter write up something, a proposal?
Sure.
I like things on paper.
Okay.
Like, how would it work?
Yeah, I'll touch base with Peter again, and...
I'd like to have a response.
So that would mean...
And, and we're going to have committee meetings in two weeks?
I don't think we started this time around. We started, probably don't...
We got to wait till November?
Well, we need to have...
Perry, we are going to have chance to talk about it again now.
Well, I think what you're clarifying is, if we're not starting this in two weeks, committees should probably try to find a meeting date between now and a month.
We'll meet at 5:30 before the 6:30.
I know, and that just extends our days, I know. Yeah, that's why I like to say it's...
Was Peter thinking, starting with that?
Trying to balance working full-time and two kids and football season is a little overwhelming. Yeah.
Just the two kids.
Just the two kids.
Was that originally supposed to start in two weeks?
Which is why I was...
I think it's just open to what the board wants.
So...
What, can I make a motion, please?
Ah...
Are we only going to discuss it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's...
Are we allowed to?
It's not an action item, so I don't think we really can, technically. Sorry, Perry.
Have a brownie.
All right, so, interest in trying it, but not necessarily for the next meeting?
I think I'll work on, I'll talk to Peter, and we'll get it fully fleshed out and bring it back in two weeks.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Sounds good. Okay, next, discussion, VSA regional training. As Peter said, there was a VSA regional training last week?
Last Monday, yes.
Last Monday, and a couple of us went. There was Peter Conlin, Peter, myself, and Steve Orzak. That was it, right? And then a couple of people from the Hannah and Perry Center, but...
Yes.
And as Peter said, they spent a lot of time talking about concerns about the financial impacts coming our way. They also gave us this little handy-dandy regional meeting thing that Peter and I each...
I'll pass mine around.
And I'll pass mine around as well. They had a lot of slides about a variety of things, which you can see as you look through it. And at the end, there's also the 2017 VSA resolutions. You can read them, I'll just, I'll give you the heading of them. Authorize the creation of school district innovation zones. Establish a statewide health insurance benefit for school employees. Establish target equalized pupil slash staff ratios and provide support to achieve ratios. Explore state-funded retirement buyout that conditions rehires on achieving ratios. Establish standards for fact-finders in the collective bargaining process and establish guidelines for reserve funds and budget surplus. So, as I said, Peter and I will pass these around. Steve, I don't know if you want to...
I would pass mine around, but there are inappropriate comments written in there, so...
No, but if you want to make a comment about the meeting.
How would you...
They did find someone to take Keith Beer's place.
Mary Gill was there. No, I couldn't, I couldn't.
They did find somebody to take Keith Beer's place. We thought we were going to push, you know, pull some arms to try and get somebody here to, to do it, but luckily, somebody stepped up who was at the meeting, so...
No, no, she was not at the meeting, but Lori Childers.
Oh, I thought the woman was at the meeting.
No, Lori Childers.
Oh, oh, okay.
And I know Lori, she's on the board in Virginans. Yeah, she's super representative.
All right, I thought it was one of those women that was in there.
She'll do the job.
Okay. Well, anyway, they found somebody, so we're off the hook from the VSA board. So did, did you want to say anything, or...
No, not on camera.
Okay. That's printable or audio?
I, I was just struck by the collective amnesia. Nicole Mace said that the governor magically stepped in at the last moment and upset the apple cart about the budget. That was at the verge of the VSA. It was frozen, and she never mentioned that. So the reason we got into that, the thing about negotiations being reopened again, was the VSA, and I think that ill serves us as a board, and I think somebody needs to tell her that.
Anything else that needs to come up?
On this agenda item, or...
Well, are there any questions on this, or this discussion on the regional training? All right, there's nothing else?
I just have two questions. I, my thing cut out, so I can't actually look at the agenda, but there was a report in here, I think, that had, from you, Peter, that had the...
Oh, yeah, the, my superintendent's report?
Yeah, and you, did you, did you go over it?
No, I've been providing that as a written report.
As a written...
And then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, have you, okay. And then the other question is the parental concern that was brought up at our last meeting and was being less handled and taken care of. Thank you.
Anything else before we take a motion to adjourn? Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. Steve has made a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, we are adjourned at 8:23. Thank you all for coming.